Okay, today is Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. Call the millions to order, click, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Factor.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Petry.
Here.
Trustee Prackno.
All board members are present tonight. Next we're gonna have the pledge allegiance and the invocation. Pastor Nogato, could you do a favor tonight? You know, we had a young girl from Elk Grove that was tragically killed in snow. Would you mind including her tonight in the prayers? I really appreciate behalf of the village. Okay, so Pastor, if you would, please. And then we'll do the pledge after the pastor's done. Please, take... I'm sorry, for the Baptist church, I apologize.
Father, thank you for tonight. Thank you for everyone in this room. Thank you that you've led us here. Thank you for your protection as we drove here. Thank you for orchestrating all the details of our lives that led us to this place. I believe that we're here for a reason. And I want to pray your blessings over each one of the board members and each one that is participating tonight. I pray that we will speak words that will build up and not tear down. I pray that I will be sensitive to your leading and that I will put the needs of our community above our own needs. So guide and lead and give wisdom to those making decisions. And we do want to remember that family that is mourning the loss of that little girl. Lord, I pray for comfort. Holy Spirit, in times like that, there is nowhere to turn but to just trust that you are the one who strengthen us. So I pray for Dad, I pray for Mom and the little sister. I pray that they will trust and lean on you on this super hard time that we have no answers. There is so hard to understand why such a thing happens. But we trust and we choose to believe that you are doing what you are doing for a reason and that you are sovereign over all things. So we are thankful for, again, bringing us to this place tonight. And we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Pastor, hang on a second. Thank you very much for coming. Unfortunate trades like that remind you of the value of life. But again, a lot of nice dark chocolates for the coming year for you. Keep you nice and healthy. Thank you, good brother. Thank you. We know trustee Factor's got an early flight tomorrow, so he's off to Bulgaria, so we'll go ahead and get moving along here for you. Wish you and Chief Walsh good luck on the flight. Chief, good luck to you too on that. I'm not sure who to watch the best luck to, those two flying together for how many hours? I don't know, but...
Well, Marty, I'll take care of them.
Very good. Under the mayor's report, several things going on. First off, we had a ribbon cutting back on January 12th, a new public works facility on Devon. Great turnout. Kobe, you guys did a phenomenal job, a phenomenal job. And then that night, we had some snow too, so they had a long day. But I know people, nothing but compliments from people going through the facility, how nice it was, how big that storage, well, vehicles. Again, the trucks looked phenomenal. Everyone thought they were all brand-new trucks. You did a great job making it look good. I liked the arrows you had, leading people around and people talking. A very nice job, first-class job, and do that. We'll prove the minutes, I know.
Wait, could I ask a question about...
Sure.
When we were at the Public Works Open House, I saw in the wall there was a sculpture, a metal sculpture of a elk head. Was that made by somebody locally? I mean, there must be some sort of story to it, because it...
Our sign guy.
Robicino.
Yeah, Robicino.
The one that does all the village signs?
Mm-hmm.
Including the nice one by our tonight's road and the toyway there that some people love. That was, he did it.
Okay, I really, I didn't...
He took tools, what he did was, he took tools that we gave him from the village, and he was talking to me that day, how long it took him to get them just right and all that. He did a beautiful job with it.
That's really beautiful.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Thank you.
It was a nice touch. That was a surprise for us, too. He did a great job with that, so, yeah. That's local, yeah. He does all our signs for us throughout the village, so that turned out nice. And you know, I know there's a lot of nervousness, because I skipped over the approval of the minutes, so we'll get that done now, Jim, to make sure you're on board. So we need to approve the minutes of January 8th, January 2019. Jim?
I move that we approve the minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second. We have a motion, trustee Petry, I send my trustees on, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record show and ask approval. See, I got out of that one, George? I kind of just smoothly went around that.
So that was it for the mayor's report, right?
It's not bad.
That was all the mayor's report.
It was okay, it was okay, it was okay. Also, on January 18th, we went to the ribbon cutting for the brand-new McDonald's on Meacham Road in front of the dress for less location there and all that. Nice new play area for the kids. Missed Ronald, no Ronald McDonald that night.
I missed it.
We missed out on Ronald.
We did.
And so that's the new one that we placed, the one that has Beaster Field and Meacham. They moved down there. So that was the fastest-built restaurant I've seen in my life. Sixty-five days, from nothing to complete, that was unbelievable. And I know they thanked Mary Jo, your department, phenomenal job getting the permits quickly, working with inspections. They were nothing but thankful, thankful, thankful for your department. So thank you for doing a great job, let you guys know what a good job they did. So, but you gotta admit, Mary Jo, did you ever see something that fast, sixty-five days? Nothing. That was unbelievable. So maybe a little faster, it's Kobe's guys plowing, which they've done a good job as usual. So thank you for that. I also want to note, as I said at the last board meeting, the house where we had the incident back on New Year's Eve was sold back on January 10th, as we said it was going to be. It's been sold. The guy that bought it's gonna be flipping it. He's already had a dumpster out there, he's had one at least so far, cleaning it out. So everything we said was gonna happen has come through and, you know, that's moving on with that. And when we talk about that, the board is well aware of issues we have in some homes in this community. And I'll just say it this way, we're gonna make sure that everything is followed to the hilt, to make sure these kind of issues never happen again. And we're gonna stay on top of it very closely. Right, trustee Frankie?
You got it.
Okay. The board, I gave you all the people renominations for the fire pension, fire police commission, plan commission, police pension board, youth committee, zoning board, and foreign fire insurance. We'll make sure Lori puts all the names and committees in record, but I know the board had no objection to the people. So I need a motion to approve the renomination.
Second.
We have a motion, trustee Frankie, I send my trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record show and ask approval. And we thank those people for volunteering the time to the village. Without all that help and sacrifice, the village would not be as successful and as well as it is. Next, we did receive from the state of Illinois, Senator Murphy, a $46,000 grant to help our Elk Grove Village Cares program. That is a program that we work with people who have addictions. We're up to fourteen people right now. Matter of fact, it's not just opioid addictions. We had two people come in for help on alcoholism. One was not very successful. The other one is, I think now, the fourth, going on the fifth month of being sober, which I think they says longest like in over a decade. So we're making a difference with this program. It's still doing very well. The state gave us a $46,000 grant to help us fund for ongoing help with people that need their help. Again, we remind people, if you have an issue, reach out to us. Call the village, call the police department. We're there to help you, we'll come pick you up. You can come into the station. If you have drugs, we'll take them, no arrest will be issued, we'll take them away from you. We will get you the help you need. We'll get you into a rehab center, we'll get you in some social service, whatever you need, we're there to help you. And we will not leave you alone. We'll follow you all the way through, we'll help you through the whole process, we'll guide you through the process, we'll help you get yourself clean. We're here to help you. Elk Grove Cares, unprecedented program, is doing phenomenally well. We're glad the state stepped up and partnered with us, and we're gonna continue to work together to make sure we help those that need the help the most. Quick update on the Bahamas Bowl. As we said before, on February 12th, three weeks from tonight's the next board meeting, we'll be making a presentation to the board and to the public as far as the results we've gotten from us sponsoring that bowl game. As we all know, this year is beyond belief, we know that, but we want to see some of the hard numbers, some of the facts. We have a contract that allows us to decide if we do the second year or not. It's one-ended, our choice, ESPN's locked in. So we can say we don't want to go further, or we can say we want to do the second year of the contract. We're gonna get all the data, all the information, and we'll present that to the public and to the board that night. The decision will not be made that night by this board. They'll give them time to absorb the information, review the information, ask questions if they have them. And then on February 26th is when we have to make the decision. We have to decide before March 1st. That's the contract date. So be ready for it in three weeks. We're looking forward to getting the data. Remember, ESPN gave us a third-party audit information. We also have Forefront, we also have Red Caffeine, all of the provided us data on the information we got. Last board meeting, we went through some of the information we got preliminarily. Biggest number we all saw was, we average lower or less than a thousand hits a month on our makerswanted.org website during the month of December, the first twenty-three days, we had almost 20,000 hits. That's almost 20 months worth of hits. We've already got contacts with several businesses, one from Texas, one from New York, that are very interested in looking at Elk Grove. I know people say, "Well, what do they do?" A business does not decide in two days. "Oh, I'm gonna move Elk Grove, let's start building today." It takes time. We've had other contacts since then. So again, it gets our name out there. That was our goal on this. And obviously, this first year, the amount of name out there was beyond belief, so we're very excited about that. So that'll happen again on the 12th of February. Looking forward, looking, remember, you see it, and we'll go from there with that. Let's see. Oh, last thing I want to talk about before, we got some presentations tonight, or two things, actually. I know a lot of people reached out to the village. People are allowed to solicit in the village. I mean, obviously now with elections coming up, you get people knocking on doors, trying to sell themselves to the community, which is good, nothing wrong with that. But we also allow private businesses to go door-to-door, but they must sign in with the village and they must receive an ID card from the village. When someone comes to your door, they have to have a village-issued ID card, asked to see it. But I know there's been a company out there called Inspire, they're a company looking to sell you electric supply of electricity. Remember, ComEd delivers electricity to you, but you can buy your electric source from any number of private businesses. You buy it from ComEd, or you buy it from other ones. Inspire is a clean energy company, which means they sell wind-powered electricity, solar-powered electricity to you. Only reason I'm bringing them up is, and they came to my house, so I know this for a fact. It was two women that came. She, one woman did have the ID card on her, so everything was good, because I asked to see. But they can be a little strong-willed, I'm trying to be polite here.
They came to my place, too.
Yeah, they can be a little strong-willed. And do not hesitate to tell them, "No, thank you, close the door." They will ask you to get your bill, they'll ask you that. You do not have to give them anything, you do not have to do business with them. You still get your electricity away, it's been coming all along.
Aggressive.
But they're very strong-willed, these young ladies. And I actually had told them who I was, and it's time for them to move on. But, so, if you feel uncomfortable, if you feel any issues at all, close your door, call 911, call the police. You have a right to do that, we encourage you to do that. They should not be too strong-willed in trying to sell you something. If you say no, they should understand, no means no, time for them to move on to another house. If they do not follow that no, call the police. We have no problem with that at all. Okay? It's as sad that we gotta talk like that about somebody, but I witnessed it firsthand myself, so I know what's going on. I have no problem with people trying to make a living, no problem with people trying to sell the product, but they need to understand, no is no. Hey, I've had people tell me no when I was campaigning. I respect that. Not many, right, Mr. Nickelbacker?
I'm sure not.
No. I think you're the only one, weren't you?
Maybe.
Okay. So, but, so do not feel intimidated, do not feel you have to talk to them, just close the door. If they continue to be there, don't leave, call 911 right away. So, and then let the village know. We need to know that stuff, too. Because we can deny a permit to these people if they don't follow the rules of the village. They can't be coming to your house at 10:30 at night, they can't be coming to your house at 5:00 in the morning, they gotta do with their normal business hours. So make sure they follow those rules, too. Last but not least, on February 2nd, right outside the chambers here, we have our, one fourth time a year, Coffee with the Board. I encourage people, please come to Coffee with the Board. I'm putting out a special invitation tonight, and I talked about this in the past, so it's nothing new. As we all know, Facebook is a phenomenal option out there, it's a phenomenal multimedia thing, but also people abuse Facebook. So I'm inviting those people that seem to love to write on Facebook but don't want to meet in public to join us that day to talk about your issues. Please, 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 I want you to come, talk to us. Don't just throw things up and see what sticks against the wall. Some stuff people bring up are so off the wall. But here's the problem, and I've said this a million times, I'm gonna keep saying it, is some of the things you say can upset people, can make people nervous. Especially when your things are so far from the truth, nothing can be fathomable, what they say sometimes. You know, especially when people just make things up and put it up there hoping to see if people believe it. Don't do that. That's doing it to services community. If you don't agree with some stuff we're doing, that's fine, but get all the facts before you make your decision. Don't go by innuendos, conjectures, get the facts. Because it's amazing, I've talked to some of these people that write the most on Facebook, and I give them the facts, and they get quiet, they hear the truth. Come. Now, we may agree to disagree, and there's nothing wrong with that. That's life, that's government, that's the way it should be. But deal from facts, don't deal from made-up fiction. It's not right. And you do upset people. So I'm encouraging, they know who I'm talking about, a couple gentlemen in particular, please come to our coffee, let's discuss it, one-on-one with the whole group. All the board to be there, get the facts. Even after we get the facts, if we agree to disagree, God bless, that's America, that's the way it should be. But we won't let you go with innuendos and falsehoods. We'll get you the true facts. So again, I'm personally inviting you, there's coffee, donuts from Girash Bakery, nothing better than that, orange juice, whatever you want's here, and we give you all the time to talk, and we have a good time, you know, it's been enjoyable. And so, again, folks show up, because a lot of stuff these people are saying are farthest thing from the truth, farthest thing from the truth. Now, the sad part is, they won't show up. They love sitting behind a computer, but they don't understand accountable in public. We're staying accountable in public. We have no problem with that. I encourage you to become accountable in public, too. With that said, I was pretty good in that, was I, Mr. Nickelbacker?
Yes, you were.
I controlled myself pretty well?
Yeah, better than...
Than usual?
Yeah.
You know what I wanted to say?
I wasn't going there.
You wanted to know what I wanted to say, but I didn't, so we did good. Okay, first off, we're very fortunate tonight that we have our state senator here for some very special presentation. I apologize to her for running a little later than usual, especially on this snowy night, but she's here from Park Ridge, where she lives, and Springfield, where she... Come on up, Laura. Senator Laura Murphy is our state senator, represents the entire community. It's nicer sometimes, we have one person to go to instead of two or three, which some communities do. And she wanted to recognize a couple very special people in the village tonight, so it's all yours, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees, staff, public. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight, because it's my favorite thing to recognize wonderful things that are happening in Elk Grove particularly, and those that contribute and add on to those wonderful things. So first, I'd like to start with recognizing the chief, Richard Michael. So just to make sure everyone knows, as I'm sure you do, but it never hurts to acknowledge and recognize you even further. But the chief has been recognized by fire chiefs, the Illinois Fire Chief Association is the Fire Chief of the Year for 2018. That's a huge recognition, a huge compliment to all of the hard work that you've done, and certainly well-deserving. So I'd like to join in the rest of the community with the fire chiefs and under the 100th General Assembly, recognize that you have been named Fire Chief of the Year. On behalf of myself, John J. Colleton, and Timothy Anderson, Secretary of the Senate, I would like to give you this recognition.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you, chief. Wait a minute, I gotta give the chief some chocolates. Oh, yeah, he definitely deserves chocolates. There are some of those. I said, I got two little daughters at home, a wife, and one for you.
Congratulations again. Then I'm also thrilled to acknowledge...
Take a second. Jim, you wanna come on down?
Yeah.
I know it's not right anyway, but the senator wanted to be the first one, she wanted to be the first one to do this, so I know it's not for a couple months, but she wanted to be the first, so, Senator, go ahead.
Well, thank you. So I want to acknowledge, first off, forty years, four decades of service that you have provided to the village of Elk Grove. That means all of the progress that you've seen happen in Elk Grove, you've been a part of that. Because I know the mayor has done a wonderful job in leadership, but without the help of the trustees, none of it would have happened and would have occurred. So I know, as your fellow trustees also know in all public service, the amount of dedication that is required to perform the job, the number of family events that you missed, of other opportunities that you had to do things, that you put aside so that you could provide service to the public here in Elk Grove. That is immeasurable, and recognizing that. I wanted to be the first, because I thought it was important under the 100th General Assembly to recognize you, and so that's what this recognition is for. From the 100th General Assembly, trustee James Petry, in recognition of forty years of dedication and service to Elk Grove Village and its residents, and that you are the longest-serving elected official, calls for the commemoration of successful career, and further extends our wishes from the Senate for happiness, health, and continued success in all of your endeavors. Offered by myself, Laura Murphy, John J. Colleton, President of the Senate, and Timothy Anderson, Secretary. So congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Now, this is not an attorney's speech, so don't go...
As you know, a building was dedicated in my name on January 12th, and that was the greatest honor and humbling experience that I've ever had in my life. And it was just, it was just complete, it was filled with a lot of residents, a lot of officials, a lot of dignitaries, and Paul Pestle, which added to the whole thing.
Most important.
So again, I'm really grateful for all the recognition, and I don't hesitate one minute for all the time that I've given, it was worth it. So thank you again, Laura.
Thank you. Go make sure, Jim, get some chocolates, don't worry. Senator, before you leave, first off, I want to thank you for all you do for Elk Grove. You've been very responsive to the community, you've been there for us on behalf. Just so you know, I think tonight, Emo got the last number, what, about 2.3 billion watching our meeting today? Yeah, 2.3 billion. So it's 2.3 billion people watching us right now during the board meeting. So, we're...
They were taking...
Oh, yeah, we're close. But I do want to thank you for all you do. I'm looking forward now, hopefully getting some things done down in Springfield, we're looking forward to that, and we appreciate your support and watch out for our communities. And you've done a great job, and give you some chocolates to bring back. Appreciate it, and anytime. It's my pleasure, thank you so much. Thank you very much. God bless. Have a good evening all, thank you. Thank you. We'll be back again. Okay, thank you. Chris, you want to come join?
Sure.
Okay, last but not least, I know we have some award winners here tonight, for, and with the snow coming down, it makes sense, for Christmas and holidays and all that. So I asked Chris to join us from the Representative Lions Club tonight, did our annual holiday decorating contest. God, that goes back to Chuck Zetex's days. He was so excited about that every year, the pictures and all the heck, getting them up there. So it's gotta be at least thirty, forty years it's been going on, so he's excited, we're glad the Lions Club, it was the J.C.'s at one time. They did it at first, and now the Lions Club is doing it. So Chris, if you want to go ahead, I'll let you take the floor and give off your voice.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight. The J.C.'s did indeed start the house decorating contest over thirty years ago, when they disbanded about, I want to say seven or eight years ago, the Lioness Club of Elk Grove took over. And just recently, the Lioness Club of Elk Grove was forced to disband, and we approached the Lions Club and the Leos Club, which is the younger Lions organization, and asked if they would take over the contest, and they did, very willingly so, and did a very good job of it. So unfortunately, Beth Kime, who I'm probably sure was the organizer of it, is not here tonight, so the mayor asked me to step in and announce some of our winners, and I believe we have three of the winners here tonight, so let's see what we got. The 2018 Holiday House Decorating Contest, the theme was Outstanding Theme Display, goes to Michael Cook of 1655 Hampshire Drive. Michael, are you here?
Come on.
Come on up, you and your wife, please.
Oh, come on. Come on. Come on.
Oh, we have a beautiful picture, I wish that you could see.
Your chances, mate, hold up that way, see if they zoom in.
Thank you.
Please, tell us a little bit about your display and how long it took you.
Okay, well, first, first I'd like to say, once again, I want to thank the Elk Grove Lions Association for selecting our home, again, for the outstanding lighting theme, Christmas theme. My biggest concept when I do this is, I have a real serious thing about this, is because where our home is on Hampshire Drive, as you come off of Gibson and you turn onto Hampshire Drive, my theme is that I'd like, I present Christmas on Hampshire Drive. And I set, I like to set the stage for all our residents on our street, and I get a lot of compliments on this, I just absolutely enjoy it, so...
So how long did it take you? I mean, that's a lot, when do you normally start putting the lights on?
Well, this year was kind of an unusual year, because it got, I got a little bit behind, because the weather was cold in early November, that's when I have to start.
We got that snow.
Yeah, and then the weather turned more favorable, and off and on for me is three weeks to do this. And the endless hours that I wake up early in the morning to laying this out, how I'm, color of lighting and where I'm doing this, but the roof was my biggest challenge this year. I've never done my roof like this before.
All the way around the top? Because it's a steep roof, you don't have the overhauled...
Multi-layers, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did all those gables, and that's all custom. I did that layout, it is so involved, four days.
So you installed all this yourself?
I did everything myself.
The person do everything yourself?
Everything.
Any help from the wife? She's honest.
I'm sorry, Mr....
I can't take any credit, no, no.
I'm gonna try to stand up, okay?
I might tell him to change the colors or something, but he does it all.
Now, have you, you're a previous winner, are you not?
I'm sorry?
Did you win this previous?
Yeah, I'm, three times.
That's what I thought.
This is my third award. And Mr. Mayor, and thank you also, it's the most prestigious thing for me, for you to present me with this, and...
Well, let's take a picture. Come on out here, let's take a picture.
This is a highlight for me, so thank you so much.
That's nice. Here, come up here, we'll get a picture. You two, come on, come on.
That's it?
Oh, yeah, definitely that.
Well, they took your beautiful, you take this picture?
That was Emo. Emo, you took the picture, didn't you?
Yeah.
So, no, no, he...
You take them that night, when they came?
No, he did it, he came back another...
It's the winners.
When'd you come by, Emo? Right after Christmas, right?
Yeah, between Christmas and New Year's.
Yeah, he came back. Now, they were in a house, you had to ask them to turn them on, did you? They were on already. Some homes you had to ask, I know. So, here's plenty of chocolates. One for you.
Thank you, Senator.
There you go, many for you.
Thank you.
But don't stop.
You make the village of our beautiful place.
People love it.
No, yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I mean, this is, I actually enjoy doing this. I mean, it's a lot of work and a lot of...
You can see, oh, yeah.
But I just, I just... a lot of work, and I just, I just enjoy doing it, and...
And I got to tell you, because many years ago, I, when my family was younger, we did the same thing, and we, we won back in, at least twenty years ago, we, and we loved doing it. But I give you credit, because as I got older, you know, I was like, but you have to let, let the younger ones take over, I am so done.
Oh, you did a great job, though. I mean, and I know what you're talking about, you got to lay out how to run the cords, where you got to plug them in, exactly what goes on. But I want to tell you something else, I got a letter today, too. ComEd wants to thank you. They love all the lights you put on. They don't want you to use too many LED, don't use too many LED lights. They don't look the same. LED lights do not look the same as the old-fashioned lights.
Right, yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's true. The, the, these are incandescent, most of it.
Right.
It's 4,000 watts.
Oh, my God.
I run 4,000 watts to do this, but, yeah, once you understand, and I'll say this most respectfully, once you understand watts versus amps, once you understand that calculation, because you just can't start plugging lights in the sockets, it don't look that way. You will blow all these circuits, so I've done a lot of homework doing that, as to...
We used to run our cords into the house through the laundry room because they had the higher, they could take the higher voltage.
Yeah.
But if you spend, you know what you're doing, because I can tell where you got them, and I knew you weren't LED lights, and that's why I'm saying, you know, ComEd loves you. So, we can't thank you enough.
Mr. Mayor, it's always an honor, it's a true honor to accept this award, so I thank you, and I thank the board members, too. Very nice of you guys.
Can't thank you enough. Good job.
Thank you.
And thank you.
All right, our next award winner, wow. Outstanding overall holiday display goes to Tom and Ray Del Parla, 711 Schooner Lane. Are you here? I'm going to turn this around and hope that Channel 6 can pick up some of this beautiful outside display. You know, and it's up to the organization that's running the contest to come up with the different themes and categories, and I think they've done, the Lions and the Leos have done a wonderful job of this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please step up.
Okay, so who's the one, who's the main?
Well, come on up by the microphone so we can get you on.
So, you're the one there now?
I do, I made everything except those trees.
So, you built all those, he's got, I know, Charles, he's got a train, he's got Santa, he's got reindeer, he's got a sled. So, you built, you spilt all those pieces?
Right.
And painted them and did everything?
Everything.
And they're gorgeous.
Where do you store them?
I built a shed for them.
Did you, remember?
Yeah.
So, all your Christmas stuff go in that shed. So, how, how early do you start? I mean, do you try to build new stuff every year, do you add on, or?
Uh, I, sometimes I leave things out, sometimes I, this year I put a few old things in that I had left out. What isn't shown in this is, I built an arch over the sidewalk.
Oh, you're right, it's not shown, yes, it's not shown.
You've won before, too, haven't you?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Because I was a judge for the Lionesses.
This is our eighth time.
Eighth-time winner?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, congratulations.
I'm so glad you keep doing it, thank you so much.
So, now, you, when do you start?
Actually, because of the weather, we did it pretty much all in two days.
Really?
Wow.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, I had, my son came over and helped me Saturday after Thanksgiving. We got almost...
Before the snow?
Oh, yeah, that's why I was in a hurry.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, I've, in the past, I've had to dig out everything before judging. And then my neighbor came over and he helped me put the arch together.
Okay.
He's a little taller than I am, so it was easier for him to reach. But it was pretty much two days, and I'm, you know, tweaking things here and there.
Well, you did a great job, and I'll tell you, you're right, you got it before the snow really hit, because that really was, killed you this year, because that was frozen, ice stuck for quite a while. You did a great job, as always, we congratulate you, we thank you for doing it. Eight-time winner? Oh, my God.
Let's take a picture.
Let's get some chocolates first, too. We'll go down and get a picture. Always give the husband one, the wife several, he's got it. Come on out there, we'll get a picture, go ahead. I think next you go put on a hat? Go ahead, glad to hear it, thank you.
You know, we always have a lot of fun judging these different houses, and if I'm correct, once the winners are decided and the pictures are taken, we post the winners' addresses on our village, on the village sign outside, so during the holiday season, we do post them, right, Maggie?
I do post theirs, and I don't, I didn't even post the winner's address.
Okay, the winner's addresses, we post those. So, after Christmas, take a look at the sign, get those addresses. What a wonderful way to spend an evening with your family, driving around and looking at all the beautiful decorating in our community. Our next winner, the theme is "The Electric Company Loves This House Award." I like that. Richie Sandberg, 391 Walnut Lane.
Chancellor Walker? Yeah, I'd say ComEd loves this.
Richie, I think you won another award this year, too, didn't you?
I think so.
Come on up and talk about it.
Oh, boy, I was in the Daily Herald. I was in the Daily Herald.
He won the Daily Herald.
I won the Daily Herald, overall lights, this year, too. Thank you, yeah, it was really cool. I don't know what else to say, other than, I think I'm...
That's a lot.
It is, it is, yeah, I mean, I think I'm the only one here that does use LED lights. I know, I know we can have some lights look better, but...
There's no shame in that, Richie.
No, there isn't, I feel shame, though, because that guy uses so many Inkins. But, you know, it's, it's cool, I, I've enabled the plug-in more, and the electric company actually loves my house in the summer, rather than the winter, because of LEDs, because of the air conditioning, so.
So, let me ask Chris then.
Yeah.
Because I've had some of these, like gingerbread before, how do you anchor them to the ground?
I use rebar, you use steel rebar, and then you use, you can use, what's it called? Zip ties, and you just use zip ties and anchor it down. And surprisingly, it stays up, I don't know how, but it's, it's science, I don't know.
Because you have to, like, I did, when I had those gingerbread, I drilled a hole in the feet part, I used those metal spikes, they had like the handle.
Yeah, yeah.
I would pound those in. Then come the winter, though, try getting those out of frozen ground.
Uh, yeah.
Do you get the kind that comes out with a little hole in it, because then you can hammer it down?
Yeah, I just beat the heck out of it until it goes down, and then I just cry when I have to take it up in the winter, because it's frozen. Yeah, you know, I'm finding out the hard way that it's not the best way.
Never won an award, too, though, haven't you?
Uh, yes, this is my second year in a row, so it's a very sweet award, so...
I remember from last year when I was a judge.
Yeah, it was, it was cool to hang out.
And you, you have another unique, do you not coordinate this with the radio station?
I do. So, I have thirty-four blown-old choir people, and I program them to play to music, so we had, this year we just put a, a sign on the wall, it's like 600 LED lights that say "Tune the radio to 106.1 FM." So, that was, that was the new thing, but, you know, the drivers, I can see.
And it worked this year.
And it worked this year, yeah, that was the best part, and it's, it's legal, I swear. Don't, don't judge me. Anyway, but, yeah, it's cool, you know, it works, so it's...
You did a great job.
Thank you.
And you did it, you know, you did it tasteful, too, the way you had them set up, the way it flowed and all that.
Yeah, I didn't want, I didn't want it to look like Christmas threw up my lawn, yeah. Because there was, there are those that do it, and then there was, you tried to do it a little tasteful.
You organized yours, so that...
I tried, thank you, yeah.
And a beautiful arch, way you did it again.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of those, one of those things where it was longer, and then I found out that it wasn't as stable, so if I shrunk it, and I did two of them, I mean, it was more work, but, you know, it stayed up with the wind, so that's almost foreboding.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was pretty cool, until he started falling, and then he went, you go...
Is he a long-hauler Santa?
No, no, I, I wish I had one of those. No, he's just a regular, you know, regular blown-old Santa.
And stood up, but you see it, because it was the only thing up there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, he stood out when you went by, he saw Santa on the road, which was good.
Yeah.
You're on the east side of the village.
I am. So, there was a lot, there was, there was a lot of traffic that way, too, because I, I'm very fortunate to live on Walnut, where it's, it's a busy street, so I had lots of traffic. When you go outside and you hear people, and you're like, what's going on? And then they gather in front of the house, like, oh, that's the way I do it, it's the coolest thing.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Some chocolates for you, too, go get a picture, but I want to thank you. Now, there's three other winners that didn't make it tonight, we want to make sure they get it.
And we will announce them, and I'll hold the pictures up for the camera at least.
Awesome, look at that, all right.
Now, do you have a shed? You got, of all, you got a lot to store all those figurines.
Yes, I do. I do it everywhere, I mean, anywhere I can put space, you know, off-site stuff, too, so it's, it's anywhere where I can find a place to put the stuff, I do it.
That's a lot.
Yeah, not even the house, though, that, you got to live somehow, but the rest of it's in inconspicuous places, so I can at least, you know, sort.
Are you watching those shows on TV, The Great Mistic?
Yeah.
And does it inspire you to...
A little bit, yeah, it's a little bit.
No, I keep taking them off for the picture, I'm leaving them there.
All right.
All right, and these, this family could not be here tonight, but they had, they won the award for Outstanding Use of Lights and Decorations, the Frank Family at 173 Smithwick Lane. Very tasteful, very beautiful.
They, they do a lot, they also do a lot at Halloween, too, there are neighbors down my street from me, they do a great job. It's, some of it's so...
They're originally one of them.
Well, it's probably frozen in the ground. This category is Outstanding Use of Multimedia, Joe Lucy, 920 Cass Lane. Oh, we've got a good giant twenty-foot Santa here in the front yard. Beautiful lighting. And this is an honorable mention, awarded to Russ and Judy Gata, 111 Wildwood Road, in recognition of your participation in the 2018 Elk Grove Village House Decorating Contest. The certificate is presented to you by the Lions and the Leo Organization of Elk Grove Village. And they do, it does include a picture of them, a beautiful lighted sleigh and reindeer. So, again, we'd like to thank everybody who participated in the contest, please consider doing it again next year, it really brightens our community.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
If you folks want to go ahead and get going now, you're more than welcome, that's fine. If you want to stay for the board meeting, you're welcome to do that. Senator, thank you again. Trustee Feiter, what is it, about three in the morning over in Bulgaria right now?
Actually, I can look it up and tell you.
Yeah, because I think it's about seven hours, right, seven or eight?
Eight hours.
Eight hours, so it's four in the morning?
Yeah.
Oh, she should be waking up now, so you're good.
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes the mayor's report, move on to trustee's report, start trustee Proctno.
Well, thank you. Just a reminder that we do have a winter's farmers market over at the Christus Victor Church. It's on the first and third Saturday of the month, it runs from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. So, this month it'll be February 2nd and February 16th, and they have an assortment of different homemade goods, hydroponically grown plants, which means they've been grown in water, different crafts and things, tastefully simple, a meat vendor, a poultry vendor, quite a few things, so it's very interesting. Please come out and consider Christus Victor Church across from the Elk Grove Cinema, the first and third Saturday of the month. And last night, our Sister Cities organization met, and we are organizing and preparing to send our Elk Grove High School students on their half of the exchange program to go to Tirmunay and Merase the last week in March. So, our travel agent was there, there was a lot of excitement talking about the itinerary and the travel plans, and it's really a wonderful experience for these seventeen and eighteen-year-old students to be able to experience another culture and live with a family for a week, and it's been very successful. I believe this is our ninth, ninth year doing the exchange. So, have never had a problem, it's always been a wonderful experience, and we're very excited to be doing it again this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Proctno. Trustee Feiter?
The Carnival of Exceptional Character is coming up, Saturday, February 23rd, 5:00 to 7:30 PM at the Pavilion. There'll be free games and prizes, such as the ring toss, bozo buckets, bounce house, strike alike, bocce ball, dog tags, and a lot more. Plus, they have free food for everyone. Remember, there's no charge for coming to this, it's just something that kids really enjoy. We usually have around 1,200 people at this. I'm sure trustee Listener will be there, he comes by every year, so we look forward to his presence. It's a, it's a real good event in, in Elk Grove Village, and I'm proud to be part of it, and it's, it's a good thing. One other item is, I wanted to thank the Friends of Cycling. Last Thursday, they had their big annual holiday party, and they gave me their Advocate of the Year Award, and I was really honored to receive that. I try to do what I can to help promote biking in Elk Grove Village, and it was so nice that organization do it, to do that. Dave Simmons, who is president, got up and gave quite a, quite a talk that I won't forget for a long time, I wish I could have taped it. It made me feel real special, and I, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Trustee Zarnik?
Thank you. On January 16th, trustee Listener and I went to visit Balance Star Company. It's a family-owned business that manufactures balancing equipment, very interesting, and this ambassador program that we're involved in is really a boon to both, to our information and I'm hoping to, to the companies. Also, on January 11th, I got the honor of celebrating another centennial, centennial with Millie Tripoli at Lexon Village, so a hundred years again. And I just want to announce that the Frank Zarnik Scholarship is available for Elk Grove Village residents. The applications are on the websites, one of which is zarnikgolf.com, there are six 1,000 awards available, and the applications must be received by May 3rd. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, trustee Zarnik. Trustee Petry?
Yes, as you know, I did attend the ribbon cutting and dedication for the Public Works Building on Devon Avenue, 450 Devon Avenue, and that was well-attended by any number of people, both residents and staff. I'd like to thank the staff for being, for doing that, as well as the trustees. I'll forever remember that. Also, on January 9th, village manager Ray Romo and I attended the Northwest Municipal Conference at Oakton College, and that was interesting, and they were putting together their legislative program for that coming year. And on the 14th, Monday, the 14th of January, I attended the kickoff meeting of the Tollway 490 Project. It was in Franklin Park, and well-attended by about thirty-one people. And they have some very specific plans, which Maggie has. They're going to, they're starting at the north, and they're already taking down the gas stations that were there as part of that oasis. That's where 490 is going to come in, off, out of O'Hare. They're also working on plans and, and ground acquisition for a bridge over Two-E Avenue, so when you go to the airport, you won't get hit by that train anymore. Cars will be over to, going over to trap. Now, that'll probably be two years before that's done. They also have a lot of connections going down south to connect onto 294, and getting off the expressway, the 390 expressway, onto, onto 490.
I feel better.
And, so, anyway, there's a lot of going, things going on, and they are making progress, and we'd like to see some more action there. And speaking of the legislative program for Northwest, I'll be attending the legislative brunch on Saturday, the 26th, in, in Northbrook at the, at the hotel up there, Algours, and that's always an interesting meeting, and it's usually well-attended by our state legislators. So, I'll be at that one, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Petry. Trustee Listener?
Thank you, Mayor. There's only one thing left that wasn't covered, at least I don't think it was. There was a open house at Arrow Road Construction and Healy Asphalt on Thursday, January 10th, there was, a lot of staff was there, I know trustee Zarnik was there, trustee Proctno, and a very beautiful building, great blacktop they have in their parking lot.
I would also.
But, anyway, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jeffrey Cheros Frankie?
Well, I would just like to mention that, Jim, you have a wonderful building named after you. It was quite a, a great open house. I would also like to thank Colby, he gave me a early tour, tour of the building, and it's phenomenal, it's another great building that our staff has put together for us, and it's going to last sixty years, and considering what we were working on it before in this, it's like night and day, so I think it'll make us more efficient. So, I thank everybody that was involved in putting this thing together, and like I said, Jim, this building's going to be around a lot, a lot longer than, than I will be, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, Colby, now that we've had a couple of snow operations, other things, a little more efficient for you guys, and they happy with it?
Really? Yeah, it's working great.
So, salt storage being right there is nice, not having to go over to the fire station by Oakton and...
We finally have completed the salt at the old fire station.
That's now all empty out? Okay.
And Krispy Kreme's started next door.
Right.
Well, so guys getting the hang of the operations and the flow and all that, so?
Yes, sir.
No problem?
Yeah.
Well, again, you know, it's funny, as I was talking to Senator Murphy earlier, a lot of people that went to the tour, asked him about the fitness room. And I explained to them that we're self-funded health insurance, so the healthier our guys stay, the more we save on money paid out. So make sure those guys utilize that as much as they can, because we really promote that with our fire departments, stations, the one in the village hall here. I see Chief Walsh a lot of times running on that treadmill in that fitness room. Actually, one of our officers was in there today when I went in there, and it was very, it's nice. So like I said, I know Maggie kind of coordinates all that, so keep up doing a good job with all that. It's going well, so appreciate it. And Chief, I'm glad you are running a lot, because that'll help you in case you gotta get away from trustee Feiter over in Bulgaria, so got a little leg up on him. If you got a bike, you'll catch him. Without a bike, you might be okay, so. Okay, we move on to accounts payable warrant for January 22nd, 2019.
I move that we pay bills in the accounts payable warrant for January 22nd in the amount of $4,852,347.32.
Motion by trustee Petry, second by trustee Zarnik. Loi, can you call the vote, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Petry?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Move on now to consider, tonight, we have considered agenda items A as in almost through M as in maybe.
I wish you would.
I don't know which way to go, so that's, I thought them both out. First off, I need a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener. Any questions, comments, or concerns from staff or board members tonight on the consent Anybody in the audience tonight on the consent agenda? Seeing none, and without objection, we call the votes, please demonstrate it, six to nothing. No items under regular agenda? Plan Commission, Mr. Romo?
Mayor, Board of Trustees, you do have one item this evening under the Plan Commission portion of the agenda, and that pertains to the Home Depot Shopping Center at Beisterfield Road in Meacham. And I, in fact, I see some people here from, representing the ownership of the shopping center. Essentially, they're looking to construct two additional outlets, or create two additional outlets on the shopping center, one on Beisterfield Road and the other on Meacham Road. The Plan Commission held a hearing or a meeting on that topic, and they provided the village board with unanimous recommendation to grant the two additional outlets with two conditions. One was that the building design site plans, parking plans, landscape plans, and cross-access easements for the new outlets must come back to the Plan Commission before any building permits are issued. And the other is to provide the village with some funding to install a future wide bicycle pedestrian path along Beisterfield Road.
There's, that bicycle path is something, as we've told people over time, we slowly implement the bicycle changes we're doing here in the village. You know, remember, the village is the one that got the three bike bridges across the roadways for the Bussy Woods. We're now doing bike crossovers on Orange Heights Road, working on one down by Northwest Point, another one will be taken up by Oakton as time goes on, put in the pedestrian-friendly bike crossing lights at Ridge and Devon and Elko Boulevard and Orange Heights Road. And as we get places where we can widen the sidewalks over time to help for bicycle travel, we're doing that. This area along Beasterfield Road, which will run basically from Meacham Road to, Michigan? No, what's?
It's Beasterfield and Beisterfield.
Beasterfield and Beasterfield, right. When it turns past there, because Weiss Road goes straight, that is one that's long been needed, a wider bicycle path there. So we're getting to that. It, you know, it's not something that can be done all at one time, but we're starting to do it, and we want to thank Home Depot for agreeing to help fund that work when it gets done. We actually want to thank Home Depot for doing the outlets, because that's something we've long wanted over there. Last thing, we've got too many of our shopping centers, we have sea of asphalt with parking spaces that aren't being utilized, that make more sense to be utilized as a business functioning that way. And we're glad, even though, well, people, it does get a little crowded sometimes, especially spring season with the flowers and the trees coming out and all that, so. But no, we do thank you for working with us on that, because we think that's a win-win. Better for you, better for the village. And outlets are always in desire in any development, as you know, as we know, so we appreciate working with our Plan Commission on that. So that's moving forward that way. So again, that's good news for the village all the way around, from biking to more outlets for businesses. Any questions or comments from any staff or board members tonight on this? It was unanimous approval, and folks, we again, we thank you for working with us on that. If there's no objection, we need to direct the attorney to make necessary paperwork.
So move.
Second.
Your motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Petry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show unanimous approval. Folks, you do not need return, I'm sorry, question? Sure. Oh, you do not need return in three weeks we meet again. It'd be a mere formality, since the Plan Commission approved it unanimous, the board just now approved it unanimous. It'll be on the consent agenda, it'll be a mere formality, you'll go ahead and go through. Please remember the two criteria. The one, come back to Plan Commission as you get the things ready, and second one, obviously, we'll get time to do the wider bike pedestrian path, we'll get that taken care of. Did you have any questions? You're more than welcome. You're good? Okay. By the way, your staff at that Home Depot, they do a phenomenal job. From the manager, who I know well, all the way down, they do a great job, especially some of your greeters. They do a nice job. We want to thank them. They really come through, and we appreciate that. And we thank Home Depot. You're a big part of this community. We thank you for reinvesting back in the community. You've done a lot of work at that store, from improvements on the parking lot to inside the store, you've done a lot of nice improvements. We thank you for keeping reinvesting back in there. The only thing I'll bring up again, I'm sure you heard it, the Plan Commission, truck idling, truck idling, truck, thank you. You're nodding. That's all I ask, we appreciate it. So with that said, you're free to go tonight, and we do thank you again for being part of Elk Grove. Thank you. Okay, anything else on Plan Commission?
There is one item I just wanted to make mention of. The Plan Commission was petitioned regarding the annexation or rezoning of property at 1500 and 1510 Midway Court. It's currently unincorporated to annex that property into the village and to zone it I-1 for the purpose of constructing a electric substation. And there is a unanimous recommendation to move forward from the Plan Commission on that. Typically, what we do in these cases, though, is put the Plan Commission's recommendations into an annexation agreement and present that entire agreement to the village board, which would probably be coming forth in a couple of months here.
Okay, we agree with that. We also want to thank ComEd. They're building a substation, a lot of times they build substations throughout the region. They ask for community support. There's a big investment. They invest some big bucks in these substations. They're doing this completely on their own. They've asked the village not for one penny. We're not, so they're doing it on their own, and they're bringing it into the village, which we greatly appreciate. So this substation's coming into the village. One gentleman in particular I want to thank is Tim McGuire.
Absolutely.
Local, a local guy, grew up with his family. His brother Tom stood up at my wedding, so it's nice to see him still concerned about the community resides in and ComEd being part of it. And this is important for us, as we build more of these data centers, and we get more reinvestment back in this business park and technology-driven, which is electric-driven type uses, to have the power available. And you've noticed over the past years, Comcast investing new cable lines and bringing new data into this community, underlying, you see them putting the new lines underground throughout this village. That is huge, making this village very appealing to businesses out there, because it's here. One of the big things about the Elk Grove Data Center, I mean, the Technology Park, is we've got all the utilities outside their property waiting to be tapped. That's huge for incentive to get businesses to come, to build, to invest, to invest over a billion dollars over there. And one of the main reasons they're doing it there is because we got to have the power there, we got the technology there, we have water, we have everything they want right at their property line, and that helps us immensely. So that is great to see ComEd doing this, that they're going to continue to do this. It's great to have everything else going. So we're excited about it, and looking forward to that being built quickly. I know ComEd wants to build it very quickly, so we're excited about that. Okay, we move on now, there's nothing on the zoning board today, correct?
That is correct.
Move on now, youth committee, trustee Frankie.
It's that time of year again where I start talking about scholarships. We're going to have seven $1,000 scholarships this year. We added three, thanks to Microphone Brewery doing a fundraiser last year, so now there's seven $1,000 scholarships available. If you're interested, Elk Grove High School, Concord High School, St. Vitor High School should have these applications. If not, you can go to the village website and look under, at Ward Application, Youth Committee, and download it. You have to have it into us by May 3rd, so you'd still have a lot of time, and I'll be talking about it for the next few months, but free money for school, so it doesn't have to be a college, it can be any kind of trade school or something, but you have to show a receipt that you did pay before you get the money. So I'll be talking about this for the next few months, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much, trustee Frankie. Business Leaders Forums, trustee Petry.
I'll pass to my cohort, Mr. Listener, who went to the ball.
Thank you. The only, we do have another couple of visits coming up, but I don't have the dates on all of them, but there is a event at Enclave tomorrow night at 5:30. Are you able to go there? See, I can't make it. Are you? Yeah, this one's on beyond measurement, metrics with meaning. So it, I understand this presenter is very good, and I wish I could make it, but I have a conflict. That's all Jim has tonight.
Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
I just want to thank the 34 donors who participated in Saturday's blood drive. That was January 12th. It is so appreciated. The next blood drive is April 6th, so mark your calendars and donate and help us. Remember, one unit can aid three people, and that's really a nice return. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Information Committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank Maggie and Caroline for, we have another excellent newsletter coming out. Why don't you just hit the homes roughly, Maggie?
Mail today.
Mail today, so this one's really good, so.
Could get it by March.
Well, oddly enough, that's a great segue, because I did want to mention one thing about the post office. It's not a complaint, but I was reading somewhere on the internet this morning that the forever stamps, the price is currently 55, or 50 cents. On January 27th, they're going up to 55 cents, which is the biggest increase since 1991 for those history buffs. But not much time between now and the 27th, but if you do have to buy some stamps, you may want to get them now and save a few bucks. I do most of mine mainly online, which is probably messing up the post office, but anyway, that was, yeah, it's getting there. The other item, you covered, Mr. Mayor, about the door-to-door solicitors. I was talking to our village clerk earlier about it today, and you covered it very well. I would just add that the village clerk's office does have these no solicitors invited signs that you could put on your store door or a window right next to the door. They're available at the village clerk's office. You could come in and get them, or you could reach the clerk's office at 847-357-4040. And that's another way of not answering the door for whether they're charities or political people like myself, or, or the people that the mayor mentioned earlier. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Listener. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
The Recycling Committee conducted a meeting on January 18th at 11:00 a.m. here at the village hall. I was there, along with trustee Prochnow and trustee Zarnik, and staff members Maggie Jablonsky and Nick Redcliffe. We have been looking at the whole thing of composting since a group of young people came to us a few months ago that run a group called Green Earth. And we thought that, gee, these young guys are really good, this is so nice what they're doing. And we asked the staff if there's ways that we could expand on this and let people know more about composting. Well, composting, and so what happened is our staff members looked at it, and they reviewed everything that we do, and we found out that our ordinances really were quite restrictive for composting compared to almost every suburb, surrounding community. So the staff made a recommendation to us to change our rulings on this, our ordinance on it, and we also, this is going along with SWANQ. SWANQ has also encouraged communities to expand what their definitions and so forth that they have for composting. So it was consensus of the committee to recommend that the village amend the current composting regulations and to allow the inclusion of materials such as fruits and vegetables, breads, grains, coffee grounds, and eggshells. There'll be no meat or anything like that in it, it's just the items that I mentioned. And I'm asking that there be a motion to approve this recommendation.
So you want us to have the attorney prepare the documents?
Yes, I would do.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have the attorney prepare necessary documents by trustee Feiter, a second by someone? Pardon? Second, trustee Listener. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show unanimous approval. Anything else, trustee Feiter?
Well, I still mention that if people are, as they are still taking down their Christmas lights, if they would like to recycle them, bring them over to the village and drop them off here, we will take them, and we usually get lots and lots turned in, so don't forget. And that concludes my report.
Quick question.
Should we get a lot, oh, I'm sorry.
What about Christmas trees? Are they still, because they took mine last week. Is there, was there a deadline?
Yes, there was. It's passed.
Because I just.
You're lucky if they took yours.
Well, no, they did take mine, but I also see one on my street this week.
One of our things said something about they'll just take, throw it in the trash. Is that correct?
They will, they will take that as ornamental waste.
They'll take it in trash.
Right now, so they'll still take it away.
Because I see some on my street this week.
They won't take it to be recycled anymore. It's past the deadline.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the thing to remember, if like, for example, let's say for Easter, you have a chrysanthemum you put out, you can throw those out, and they will take those, you know, in the basket and stuff like that. They will take them, take them, they call them ornamental waste. So like at Halloween, you have cornstalks, pumpkins, they will take those and throw them out. Christmas time, wreaths, you don't have to bag them, you just put them out, they will throw them out, because that's called ornamental waste, but they don't get recycled. The best thing, obviously, we can recycle, but if you don't get it in time, they will throw everything out. That's, they do this.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, because people ask all the time, you know, like cornstalks, I get that all the time, the Halloween stuff. Throw them out, they'll take them, don't worry. And they do, they do a good job with that.
Okay.
So not a problem. My question is, hopefully, we got our guys out there when they got done taking the lights down around the village hall, because we had quite a pile.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if anyone saw those. I mean, I saw them at the, in the parkway.
Recycled.
Oh, we had a lot to be recycled, because they throw those lights out of a year, you know, because they're not LED, so they go from that, so. Okay, parade committee, trustee Zarnik.
Just wanted to mention, our next meeting is April 1st at 5:30, Room E in the Charles Etta Municipal Building. The parade is Saturday, September 21st, and that's in conjunction with the Elk Grove Oktoberfest. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie. No report. Judiciary Planning, zoning committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Affairs Committee, trustee Zarnik.
The 2019 Street Maintenance Program was passed tonight, so look forward to resurfacing, the resurfacing of nine miles of residential, two miles of business streets, as well as other concrete and curb work to be done. Another construction season. That concludes my report.
Thank you. There's no airport update. The next big meeting, we have a SOC meeting on February 1st, SOC meeting, and then we're And then we're hoping the week of February eleventh, they have a joint meeting here at the village hall, where we invite all the community's board members that want to come to be part of. And actually, going to invite the fair group to come and lay out what's going to be presented, the ONCC for the Fly Quiet Program when the airport's done being built out. So it's like twenty-twenty-one goes into effect. So we'll be having a meeting explaining what kind of rotation, flights, and I've been saying this now for years, is with that last runway, Elk Grove's going to have more impact than it has now. And it's going to be going down mainly Devon Avenue and to the west side of the community. So I want people to be aware of that and make sure we get notice up on the, online. We're going to record it. We're going to have Channel Six here. We'll make sure we get as much information public as we can. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, Mr. Nekabaka, Fourth of July, we have?
What's that?
Very good. First concert here, the week later, Town Center?
Boss Gags.
Next one after that?
Commodores.
After that?
Country western, oh, Judd.
Judd? And the last one?
Night Ranger.
Night Ranger. We said just Judd.
You gotta say Winona.
No, we can't.
No, Judd.
You can't say Winona.
Just Judd.
No, I...
Just Judd.
I thought it was just her first name.
It's Winona?
It's Winona.
Winona and the big noise, no Judd. So don't say Judd, just say Winona. Okay.
It's a little late.
That's important, Nancy.
Winona's a big noise. Noise. I said noise. I said noise.
She's got a big nose.
Please, it's Winona. Hey.
Is it big noise?
It's like we got an open...
Yeah, I said noise. I didn't say nose, I said noise. I said noise.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I said noise.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Who's going?
Winona, noise. The big noise. Okay, so that'd be coming up, fascinating to think, six months from now, we're almost done with it. So five months from now, basically, we'll be ready for it.
But first, Memorial Day.
Festivals Committee, the only thing we got coming up next is Memorial Day, which will be held on Memorial Day. Ten forty-five a.m.
Outside?
Inside.
Inside, nice try.
They bought, they like that, don't they?
They do.
See, patience. Patience.
I think you just wore us out.
Even a blind squirrel finds a nut once in a while. So we're good. And report from village manager, Mr. Romo.
If you don't mind, I would like to take a moment to express our gratitude. Firstly, our deepest gratitude and thank you to Public Works for that wonderful open house that you held at our beautiful, brand-new facility. Absolutely first-class, wonderful job that everyone did over there to put all the equipment and building into absolutely tip-top shape. And thank you so very much for doing that. Secondly, to congratulate Jim Petry again on having that incredible, brand-new building named in his honor. It was very impressive to see him and his family and all the activities that took place around the James Paul Petry Public Works Facility. And congratulations, I'd certainly be proud to have the building named after me, and I just can't imagine how proud you must be to have that incredible facility named after you.
Is that a hint?
No, no hint. No, it was not a hint. And thirdly, on behalf of a grateful staff, I would like to express our deepest and sincerest appreciation to the mayor and Board of Trustees for building that brand-new building and allowing us to have that brand-new facility. I've heard nothing but incredible compliments from all of the Public Works team members about how that has improved their operations and how proud they are of that facility and how wonderful it's been for them. And, you know, it couldn't have happened without you folks, and we are deeply grateful and appreciative. So thank you all very much for allowing us to do that.
Well, we're very appreciative and thankful to a very successful community and business park, because they gave us the funds available to be able to do that. And we're happy about that, because without a successful business park and community, we wouldn't be able to provide that. But we know that, Kobe, you and your team will be even more efficient. You'll provide, you always did great service, but even better service, hopefully. And, you know, we're very thankful. We're looking forward to the new fire station being built, hopefully open up by May first, both Meacham and Fargo. And still got a lot of other work to do, right, Mary Jo, with roadways and sewer lines and drainage and lighting and got a lot going on. So twenty-twenty-five, big time, Mr. Nekabaka.
Thank you.
Yep, coming soon. And now we move on to report from our village clerk.
I just want to say, we do have early voting that will be at Elk Grove, the village hall again. The hours are now posted on the website, so...
What are the dates?
It's going to be March eighteenth through April first, and they are going to include Saturdays and Sundays.
And weekdays are what, nine to five?
Weekdays, the first week is nine to five, the second week will be nine to seven.
Really?
Yeah. And then on the weekends, it's ten to four on Sunday, and the Saturdays are nine to five.
Wow, that's great.
Is there an election coming up?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Our fine village attorney, there's nothing under him. But he's so efficient and good at what he does, I can see why there'd be nothing there. Good job, Mr. Nekabaka, as usual.
You're making the second meeting in a row, aren't you?
Two in a row? And my tongue hasn't fallen off yet. It comes close though, a couple of times. Trustee Frankie still was a bad one. Okay, is there any new business items that any trustees want to bring up tonight?
I did forget one thing. I would be remiss if I didn't do my winter snowbox.
You did that already.
I did not do it this, I did not do it tonight. We've had a lot of snow and a lot of icy rain, and I encourage all of our residents to get out there and shovel their sidewalks. I know you're out there doing your driveways, but the sidewalks are important for our seniors and anyone else that are, that's out there walking. The roads are very slippery and dangerous, especially tonight. And if you can help out in any way, help a disabled neighbor or help a friend, let's get those sidewalks cleaned off so we can have safe walking in our community. And that concludes my report.
Yeah, you bring up a good point, Trustee Prochnow. If I was like a person running for trustee of the village, I'd probably be out there right now shoveling as many sidewalks as I could. That's what I...
Would you think that would work?
I think that'd be phenomenal, if they, you know, anyone running for village trustee, they should be out there shoveling those. I think that'd be phenomenal.
That'd be good.
If I was running for trustee, I'd do it.
That's not, it's not like buying votes, though.
No, it's just being a good public servant.
A good community spirit.
I'm just saying, that's what I would be doing. Not mayor, running for trustee.
Yeah, I figured.
Let's clarify that.
Clarify that.
Yeah, just trustee candidates, yeah. Mr. Petz, how you doing tonight?
Excellent. I'd like to concur with village manager, Mr. Romo, on the award of excellence, Trustee Petry, on his new garage, John Devon, and his award from Senator Murphy.
Thank, boy, that was very impressive. And it's your garage, so you can park your car there, Jim. You'll be fine, nothing to worry about.
I could park right next to him.
But thank you, Mr. Petz, that was very nice, appreciate it. Mr. Shavel, how you doing tonight?
Excellent.
For a Tuesday.
Mr. Sacks, how you doing? Very good. Mr. Schmidt? Whoa. Always got to be a different one out there. Yeah, he started a little curve. He's thinking. Ms. Weiner, how you doing? Good, so we got good, okay, well, okay. We got three excellents, that's not bad. Mr. Nekabaka, how you doing tonight?
I am fine.
Okay, with that said, being timed, so Mr. Feiter can get home and get some sleep. I need a, well, we're going to be quicker, we didn't have a long recycling report.
Let's stay a few more hours.
Well, the recycling department's so long, you'd have been out of here. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah, motion by Trustee Zarnik, or motion by Trustee Zarnik, second by Trustee Petry. Now, if I say it for a while, they can't call the vote, can they? So we'd have to stay here.
They can call for the question, but probably not.
Yeah, they couldn't call for the vote, I have to call for the vote. So we want to sit here a long time, and Trustee Feiter's going to have to wait. Trustee Feiter, though, we might be able to take care of that. You know, if we wanted to go in...
If, if you wait long enough, I, you'll find out I just won't go on that.
Okay.
Ooh, stand up. And that is no kidding.
Call the vote, trustee, or village clerk, Lori.
Trustee Frankie.
Yes.
Aye.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Petry.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Trustee Feiter.
Yes.
You voted yes? I thought you were going to stay longer. Okay, motion to adjourn passes six-nothing. Folks, three weeks till the next meeting, February twelfth, meeting adjourned.